Thank you Chair, shall I speak on your behalf? Myself and Susan have an interest at 7.4 when we shall absent ourselves from the chamber, will that still leave you quorum?
Okay. I've got a pecuniary interest in item 7.1, payments which is the mayor's allowance. Okay, move on to item 3, the minutes. Can we first of all confirm? I'm trying to get this up there. No, I can't move it up and down, sorry. Ah, oh, that's good, you are clever. Okay, not my machine. So can we confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the 13th of June as a true and accurate report? Yes, all those in favour? See everyone? Thank you. 3, 2, to receive an update on items from the previous meeting if not on the agenda for this meeting. Jane? No? No, okay. Sorry, I'm trying to get this in the right order. Okay, to receive report, chairman's report. For one, chairman's report. I attended a meeting of the finance committee on the 15th of June. On the 22nd of June, I attended a Charlotte Harvey management committee and a food hub management committee. And today, I attended with Catherine and Sue Dent to look at where the heritage boards will be placed in the next few weeks. Okay. Vice-Chairman's report?
Thank you. I attended Richard Bishop's, he's the clerk of Swaffham his retirement due, on the 14th of June. Attended the finance meeting on the 15th of June. On the 22nd of June, I attended the Charlotte Harvey Trust and the food hub meeting. And on Saturday, the 24th, I attended the Bishop's garden party in Norwich, which I won't go into too much detail, but there was lovely food and lots of drink.
Shame. Okay, 4, 3, we've got district councillors' report. Now, I believe Tina sent one in, which you should have all seen. Okay. Keith? Yeah.
Could we ask the district councillors just to perhaps ask a question about that? Because there are a lot of the buildings on the High Street are heritage buildings, some of them are listed. And I'm not sure which ones that are listed have the five colours off. But if they are taking, if they are taking them off the buildings, can we have assurance that the buildings won't be damaged in any way? And they will be checked for damage afterwards? Because as I say, some of them, I think, are listed.
I'm only going to let you talk once, go on.
I believe that MTI money was used for, for that. How, does this mean that Watten now has in effect lost that, that money?
Graham? Graham, do you want to ask something? Okay, all right. Yeah, okay, fine. 4, 4, county councillors' report? No? Okay. No county councillors' report? There you go. 4.5, clerks' report?
Very quickly, I've booked to go to an SLCC conference, I hope that's okay? That's next week, July the 7th. That is the same week, we do have a young girl in work experience for the week, but we'll be covering her between various locations, so I think that should work all right. I've also passed that to Stan, whether he's interested in going, because it is open to councillors as well. Anybody else for that matter? Sports centre, the skate park, I think we did wonder why the planning application had been withdrawn. Talking to them up there, it is because a noise assessment report's needed, so I'm guessing it will go back in when they've got that report. Things are in my written report, which I won't go through, but just very quickly, we've got two grant applications that came in this week, too late to go on the agenda. Having spoken to Peter, we will put them on the next agenda, which will be out of sort of sequence as to when we should look at them. But if we don't look at them, they'll be sort of too late for the, for the applicants to use. So something to think about with our pack, I think, or dates we need these in for to fit in with when we look at them. Rob Pratt, who we spoke to about the bus shelters in the High Street, has just sort of come back to me to basically say, sorry, he hasn't been back in touch, but he's still waiting for different things. So we're not forgotten about, but it's taken longer than they expected, I think, to move that forward. Breckland, we've had a few things from Breckland, I think they've had quite a few staff changes, perhaps Keith knows more about this, but one of the girls who've been part of the sort of team who've been looking after Watten and the High Street Task Force involvement and that sort of thing. Caroline Bidwell, she's going to come out next week just to visit the office and update us a bit on things because of these changes. And the mentor that we had for the town is no longer going to be mentoring Watten, so that's, that's why we haven't heard any more about the task force.
Jane, what day is he coming?
Well, she hasn't confirmed yet, so I think Wednesday possibly, but I'll let you know.
Thursday or Friday?
It's the fans from the heater, if that's, okay. It's the new air conditioning system.
And Breckland have let us know that they've got a new mobile deployable surveillance camera that they hope to use when tasking flight chipping, in particular, antisocial behaviour. So whether we'll hear any more about that, I can't think where we'd want to use that or have anywhere to use that at the moment. But we have suffered a bit of antisocial behaviour at Riddell Road, broken glass and different things. So I have passed that to the safer name team and Anne's keeping an eye on it as best she can and has done, do quite a bit of clearing up down there. Otherwise, I think things have gone out to you, the Norfolk G L C newsletter, Breckland car parks, again, which is a review they're going to undertake, the car parks, and taking number plates, which I don't know why they need to do that. And we've met, last thing, we have met with the guys who put our Christmas lights up now, with a view of what more can they do this year and what cost. And when we've got some figures, I'll bring that back.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Stan?
Thank you Chair. Two, two points on the clerks' report. Firstly, thank you very much, Jane. With regards to mobile CCTV, do we know if it's covert or over? Through you, Chair. Okay. And secondly, the issue with the, the car park cameras, Sue and I have been discussing this and we've read the document from Breckland. And the only reason I can see that they would want ANPR cameras, the automatic number recognition cameras, would be that if they're looking at where vehicles are registered to, for example, are they coming all the way from Attleborough? Are they coming from Griston? Are they coming from Leeds? To get an idea, which they would legitimise under legitimate interests.
Thank you. Graham?
Yeah, can I ask you a question? There was something from the government about scrapping the charges for D L Y flight chipping, like, you know, going to the dump. Does anyone know anything regarding this? Is the government thing, they're saying that they are going to scrap?
Yeah, I did see that, but didn't, I couldn't find anywhere when it said it was going to happen. There's a £5 charge at the moment, or a fat and small, if you take it all down.
I reckon, because somebody's just taken some from next door to me, they, they would charge £5 or £6 for a bag of, of stuff. So it's still in operation at the moment, the charging, so.
Might be the light next financial year. See if we can find something out. It's a question we could ask our county councillor if she was here. There we go. Okay. Right. Nothing more, Jane? That's it? Okay. 4.6, report from lead councillors. Any lead councillor got a report to make? I think you've got an item on the agenda anyway, Graham, haven't you? Stan?
Yeah, from a HR perspective, I'll incorporate that if I may, item 15.1, Chair.
Sorry.
From an HR perspective, if I can incorporate that at 15.1.
Yeah, sure. All right, anybody else? No? Oh, sorry. Is that you? No, go on.
Just to say, Pete mentioned about having met with Sue to, to go round to look for the sites for the heritage maps. I did have a look back on my notes and it's about a year since we first engaged with the guy who was going to, who was going to design them. And I'd just like to pay tribute to the work that Sue Dent has done on this, because the maps are really going to be lovely things to have up. And she's now doing quite a lot of work to look at the sites and also the type of weights we display the maps as well. So there's a lot of work going into it and, as Pete said, it should come off within the next few months, hopefully.
Okay. Thank you. All right, thank you. Okay. To note and amend the works in progress list, which you should have had a copy of. I'm not going to go through all of that line by line. Does anybody want to raise any issues on it? Catherine, you were going to say something about somewhere.
I can't remember what number it is now. Yeah, it's number 58 and you have highlighted it, Jane. It's the one about, we were going to do a history board on church walk and it's dependent on permission being granted by N C C. Now, we're going to have the heritage maps up, this was going to be something different. And I think perhaps we might need to revisit that and see whether it's practical to do that at the moment because of the issues we're having about church walk. So I, I don't know whether people wanted it just to stay on there, highlighted, or whether we wanted to come, take it off and come back to it at a future date.
Okay.
So that would be up to.
Yep. All right.
We're on that. The other one is number six, which is towards the end of the list. And this is about reinstating the water fountain of the Morereal Garden. And I think that's just something we've not done anything with at all, to be honest.
And to be honest with you, I don't think it's possible to do it, but I did ask our contractors to have a look at it. And he said it was going to be more trouble than it was worth. So could we agree that we, for the time being, we defer any decision on that? Because I think there are other things in the town that need doing first before we worry about. And we'd have to get Anglo Water and the nutrition would have to be got in, it's just too complicated. All right, we defer that. Sorry, Keith? All right, not such a good, so you're happy to defer that one? Yeah, okay, excellent. Okay, let me go back again, where are we? Okay. Six. Public participation. Oh, there's nobody here, unlike last week. Okay. Item seven, finance. 7.1, to approve the payments for June 2023. Are you happy to do, to approve those? Yeah, that, seconded for that, sorry, yeah. All those in favour? I won't vote, I'll abstain. Okay, good. 7.2, to receive the finance committee minutes from meeting held on June 15th. So all you're doing is receiving them, not commenting on them. Okay? Fine. Then to recommendations from the finance committee. The first item on 7.3, that prior to setting a budget for the bike event, an outline proposal for the format of the event, including the possible use of outside agencies, risk assessment stroke management marshalling and public liability insurance, and an indication of potential cost should be provided by the council leading on the event. Do you want to say anything of that?
I mean, Tina is aware of this recommendation because she was at the finance committee when we agreed to bring this forward as a recommendation. We, we agreed that it's difficult to actually set a budget for this because we haven't, we haven't done this event in this way before. And so really, we're saying that before we actually decide how much we should commit to this, we need some figures back from the people who are likely to be organising it for us. Not just a ballpark figure, but let's say it's for a thousand pounds, what would be involved with that? So some figures which give an indication as to what would be covered by those figures, so that we know roughly how much we should set. Because we could say, oh, we can set up to 10,000, but we don't know then whether we're being wildly, you know, over pessimistic or whether we're, we're just being me. So we really do need some figures with actual costings attached to them, so we can get a realistic idea of what the budget should be. As I say, Tina was there when that was set and she's the lead councillor on that particular event, so she is aware of that. So if you want to accept that recommendation, I suggest that Jane just sends her an email requesting the sort of information that we need.
Tina has sent me an email with some breakdown of costs and she's thinking, and the lines have up to about £4,000 and no more at the moment, but say that it's, there's some outline there, but there's things I need confirming, particularly insurance, I feel.
Stan?
I was just going to say, if Tina can let us have those for the, for the next finance meeting, then we'd be able to sign that off and that's your budget.
Okay, Stan?
Thank you Chair. From my own understanding and anyone else who may, may be in a similar mind, I do appreciate that these things cost and that we want to bring trade to the town. But I cannot see how other businesses in the town benefit as much as one particular business will from this. So are we, are we being disproportionate by supporting an event in effect to be held outside the front of one particular pub in the town that may not benefit all the other businesses? Now, I've not attended the event and I don't know what the trade has been like for the other businesses in the High Street, but I just wanted to raise that, that concern and leave it there.
Okay, all right. Tina?
From that point of view, it's probably a bit like that. It's normally the place attached to the event will have already, you know, the connection and any drinks, not alcohol, because most of the bikers don't actually drink alcohol, but whatever they do, it's straight away to them, unless they actually come down on the High Street and they visit the other shops. Even if they don't have any financial support, they will have straight away support from everybody that comes to them, because obviously it's the, it's the, that business specific that is attached straight away to the event here.
Okay, thank you Tina. Welcome comments on that. Graham? Fine. Okay, well, you've seen, we've had the recommendation there. We, we do need the details, we can't just say, yes, you can have whatever amount of money, we've got to know what it's going to be spent on. We've got to know that there's a risk assessment included in it, we've got to understand what kind of insurance it is. So all those details are important because we can't say yes to it otherwise. Sorry, Jill?
I'm just thinking of something that was mentioned last time about safety of staff that were monitoring or controlling the event. So would security or something need to be put in place as well?
Well, my understanding is they've got security there, but, but I have to be quite clear, the council paid staff will not be taking part in it. Okay, because they quite clearly said.
Yeah.
It would be unsafe, they didn't want everything to, we can't make them, I don't want to make them. That's the idea they came up with, that they've got a company that will do it all. Well, well, let's see what the company will do and the cost of it before we do a final yes. So are you happy with that recommendation?
Yeah, fine, thank you.
Okay, fine. All right, 7.3, little 2, that the purchase of a new chain for the mayor should be explored as the current chain will be fully engraved by 2024. Yeah?
I mean, this is purely a practical thing, that the chain is nearly full and you could try and add plaques to it, but it's given the state of the train, the heaviness of it now, it's more practical to actually invest in a new one and archive that one in the museum.
Are you happy with that recommendation? Okay, fine. Who's going to do it? Going to ask the clerk, are we? Of course. Jill, do you want to say something?
I purely agree with Catherine, I've heard the weight of the, the chain.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And Jane, at some point, well, either she'll do it, someone else will do it, come back with some figures. 7.3, little 3, to allocate up to £5,000 included VAT in the 2023 budget to install an electric blind to cover the large end window in the council chamber. Yep.
If you can remember, at the last meeting, it was quite sunny and people having problems with the, the light coming through. And that's a problem for people sitting in meetings. It's also a problem for the chamber itself. I mean, we've got really nice furniture now, the strength of the sun coming through the window could be quite damaging for the fittings. And we have a responsibility to this building because it is a heritage building, it's a listed building. And it would benefit the museum, obviously, to, to complete the blind by having that one, but it will also be a practical measure for the council. We do have a responsibility for this building. Chris from the museum has got us some, some figures and has contacts where we could have this sort of, to match the other ones, those made. We know it's going to be in the region of £4,000 to £5,000. And I think actually, given what's been spent on Watten Hall in the last 20 years, it's, sorry, Weyland Hall in the last 20 years, it's a small amount to pay to actually improve the building.
Okay. Graham?
I just think it's excessive, up to £5,000 for a blind for that. Have you had any, any other quotes in, or you've just taken the first one?
The reason, the reason it's so much is because we have to have scaffolding, so it's not just a blind, scaffolding, the pelmate. The type of blind, it's not just a ordinary blind, it's, it allows some light through, but it's, I don't know the material's called, but it stops certain rays coming through, UV rays. And it also will have an electrical device on it because it's too heavy to just do a manual wind on it, because it's really too, I would say, will be too heavy. So there's a mechanism, the electrical, the wiring and everything as well. That's why it's that sort of price.
Yeah, but is, is that just one quote?
As far as I know, that's one quote now. I mean, we can actually take the figures that the museum has provided us with and we can look at other quotes if you want. But this would be setting an amount we can go up to within that. So we can look for other quotes, but what this resolution is asking us to do is to set an allocation.
Yeah, I appreciate that, but well, I think that we should, whatever we're doing, we should get more than one quote. Okay?
Yep, okay. Stan?
Thank you Chair. I'm mindful of that, I'm appreciative of the work the, the museum have done. And although we are quite right in looking for other quotes, considering the amount of money that's been spent on this chamber in the last 18 months alone, we should be mindful that what we get is in keeping with what we've already got. And that if we do have to pay that little bit for it, it may be necessary to make that sacrifice. So when the, when the prices come in, I'd perhaps speak again on this and encourage councillors to think along those lines. Thank you.
Okay, so 7.3, little 2, is to allocate up to £5,000.
Also, sorry, Peter, can I also just say, sometimes we can only get the one quote if it's specialist work particularly.
Well, I'm going to say that the, the proposal is there and I would include in that the possibility of other quotes as well be included in that. Are you all happy with that then? Okay, fine, thank you. 7.3, little 4, to accept the tender document received from the consultant engaged to compile the tender, this is for the player at Lovell Gardens, doesn't say that, but that's what it's for, and to add £20,000 from reserve to boost the available £60,000 S106 funding. So that's to employ, the consultant we've had, come back with recommendations, we can pay him to go out and do the tendering for us rather than us having to go through the, well, we have to go through the government website, but he'd do all of that. And then we put a bit of extra money in to make certain it will cover the cost of any equipment. Are you happy with that one? Yeah? Okay, thank you. To accept the tender, oh, sorry, got the wrong one, 3, 7.35, to consider entering into a yearly service with contract with C B R Business Solutions for H R and employment law consultancy. Stan?
Thank you, Chair. And I speak as lead councillor, as chairman of the HR committee. This is something that is necessary as conscientious and responsible employers, that we should have something in place. And my knowledge and Sue's knowledge, by working with CBR through a different job, is that they are the right people for the right job at the right price. And I would encourage councillors to approve this.
Jane, what is the cost?
So did sort of put a bit of a breakdown. It's £105 plus VAT for an hour to obtain specific advice on one issue that we've been asked to clarify. Otherwise, I was quoted £5,450 plus VAT, which is for initial HR audit and then sort of if we need advice from there on. There are different packages and I think you get so many hours for that initial £5,450, might be six hours for the first year. So I think as Stan said, that probably is the, the better option.
Sorry, which one?
To take the yearly.
Take the yearly one, okay.
Yeah, it's a one off of the £105 for one specific question and that, that would be it.
None, fine, none of us here are an expert on HR, we've all dealt with it, but in the end, even if you work in HR department, you have to go and ask legal advice from somebody. So are you happy to accept the recommendation there? Yeah, okay, thank you. Yeah, that's for a yearly service, okay. To accept the quote receipt of £3,168 for gutter clearing at Weyland Hall.
Again, this goes back to, we have had no other quotes to do that work, but it's the same guys who've done this side have now said we need this side looked at as well. And, and we do, there's plants growing in it, if you look at it. We can go out for other quotes, but we have, they are preferred contractor, I think you say.
Catherine?
It is a preferred contractor, but also there is some urgency, I think, because the build up's getting quite bad now. And if we leave it too long while we're waiting for quotes that may not happen for this, because a lot of people don't want to do this work, the build up could be so bad, it's going to cost us more.
Graham?
Yeah, the other day, on the other side of the High Street, they were cleaning the gutters with a Hoover, a long arm with a Hoover, going along with a camera on top of it, so they could see everything was clean, right? I can't say you can justify over £3,000 just to do a couple of gutters, but I think we should get another quote. I think that's excessive. And with this, this money's got to come from somewhere. If we could save, you know, we've got to, that's the important thing. As long as we get a good job done, and if it's done with a camera, so we can see that it's been done properly, we've got no problems with that. But we can't just say, okay, we're better quiet, let's go ahead and do it.
Stan?
Thank you, Chair. And I commend my fellow councillor for being conscientious of the funds. What Catherine is probably about to mention is that what has to be taken into consideration is the age of the building and the specifics with a listed building and the potential damage, firstly, that can be caused by a company that aren't sure what they're doing. And secondly, by it not being done properly and the water damage runs into tens of thousands. So again, if we're seeking another quote, we need to be mindful that the quoeter is confident to overcome those issues.
Okay, well, what I'll say then is it's up to you. If you want to go and try and get another quote, we need to put a time limit on it. I think that's quite clear. I know the clerk has tried before and there's only about two or three roofing companies that will do it because I don't think you'd get anything up that high up to be able to suck the gutter out. You have to put scaffolding up and it's a listed building, so it has to be done in a particular way. Tina?
Is this amount that is here is just for this side?
Yeah.
Yeah. So is it any, any more or extra in relation to the other side or is?
The other side's been done.
Yeah, but was the same amount?
It was about the same amount.
Yeah, okay.
So what do you want to do? Come on, somebody put proposal here. I mean, the proposal is there.
Can I just add as well then, it's, it's hazardous material as well, isn't it?
Okay.
It's pitting.
Well, the, the proposal is to accept the quote of £3,160 for gutter clearance. Can I see those in favour? Against? Well, okay, goes ahead with that then, thank you. And finally, seven point three, little seven, to accept the review of the financial regulations with no amendments. So are you happy just to do that? I'm sure you've all read them avidly. Well, that's good then. So you're happy with that? Yeah, fine, okay. Okay, seven, four, to, no, before you, no, hold on, wait a minute. You might not need to go. To consider quotes received from GDPR consultancy, you had those. Now, Jane, you went?
We, there was an online session from Leaks Prior, actually, who were putting forward that they will produce documents related to GDPR and they're going to come back to councillors and let us know what that is. So I don't know, again, where that fits into things.
Well, can I suggest then that we defer the item until you get this back? Because if they produce a document legally that says, covers everything, and we see what the cost is, we know where we're going. If, if they don't do that, then we're, we're no further forward, but we're no worse off. So you're happy to defer it? And can you try and get that for the next meeting? Because I don't want to keep putting this up and putting it off. Well, if they don't get it, we carry on with what we were going to do. Are you happy to do that? Fine, thank you. Yeah, I'm going to rush out of the room. Okay. Eight, to review the Armed Forces Covenant. You're all going to say, what does it say? I don't know, go on, Catherine.
Well, I was just going to say that we accept it as it is. There was one part of it that I wasn't sure was happening, and that was about putting something on our website.
I saw that when I looked at it and I put it on. And what we haven't got is a lead councillor, unless it's Sue with the cadets and Stan with Armed Forces. So I don't know.
Yes, okay, fine. So are you happy then to renew it? Yes, excellent, thank you. Nine, to agree Queen's Hall donation of £100 for annual advertising. It's just so we can put our signs up on there. Happy to do that? Good, excellent. Eleven, to consider area where the men's shed can assist with gardening. And that, Graham, you put this on. Sorry. Oh, I missed ten. All right, so I'll go back again. Haven't got. To consider donation application for Kingsley Healthcare Limited. Now, you remember last time they said they wanted to try and do a picnic in the park and we said, talk to Sue. But you can ask for a grant and I think they've asked for a donation of, have you got it somewhere? £500 for them to run a picnic in the park. Are you, are you happy to do that?
I think it would be more sensible if we paid invoices.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because of.
Yeah, okay. So you're happy to accept the grant, providing they provide invoices for it? Yeah? Sorry? Yeah?
We are talking about Thorpe House Nursing Home in Griston.
Yeah.
Getting a grant from Watton Town Council.
Well, the, the thing is, they have a, as part of the loch, they have a remembrance garden in the loch that they did for relatives of those people who passed away during COVID at the home. So rather than visiting the home, they come to the loch because there's a tree planted there, et cetera. That's why they want to do it.
Thank you, that explains everything.
So you're happy to approve that, providing they give us the invoices? Yeah, okay, fine, excellent. Now, Graham, if I've got the right order, to consider an area where the men's shed can assist with gardening.
Yeah, well, I've been approached and they have asked if there's any land or little bit of park area or anything, so they can get together and do a little bit of gardening. There's no charge, they just want to, you know, get together, you know, on Sunday afternoon or Tuesday evening or whatever, just to do a little bit of gardening together. And have we got anything available that they could use without stepping on anyone's toes that, you know, if you've got a contractor already cutting the grass and doing stuff, we don't want to, you know, it looks like, you know, we're going to be doing that. And then all of a sudden, the men's shed turn around and say, sorry, if we can't carry on with it, then we've got to call back to the, you know, contractor that's doing it in the first place. So it's a bit of a delicate thing, but I just wondered if there's anywhere that they could utilise just to do a little bit free gardening.
When you, I mean, we have lots of spaces and obviously we have a contractor who cuts the grass at the, the gardening side, if you want to put it like that. We have the Jubilee Gardens, but we employ a gardener to do that. Is he still doing it, Jane? Yeah, well, he's not doing your garden for you, hold on. Okay, Jill?
Just thinking, is there space at the Charlotte Harvey for something like a vegetable plot that could then go into the hub, food hub?
Well, it was a nice idea. There's a butterfly garden at the moment.
Yeah, yeah, there's a butterfly garden.
Yeah, but I mean.
Thinking, you know.
There is nothing else at the moment.
Vegetables, even herb garden or something.
Yeah, okay. Sue?
And as you go into the allotments on Thetford Road, the section on the left hand side was originally discussed as to whether it would go to the cadets. Has anything happened with that or would that piece of land be available for them?
There are still areas at the allotments, if people wanted to take them on as a community plot. We also have, as you mentioned, Graham, Memorial Garden is perhaps an area where only gets trimmed once a year by our contractor. I think it depends how the men's shed were interested, how we'd want to do it, because they would need to be signed up as our volunteers, is how I see it.
Well, I, I think, Graham, I don't think we're against it. I think what we'd like them to tell us, what they'd like to do, because depending on that, we'd have to look at where we could give it to them. I mean, if they want to grow, if they want to grow things, fine, then we need a particular type of land, which is, I presume, what they'd want to do.
Yeah, yeah. What we, what I need really is, A, is there a possibility of it being able to do something? And is there a small list that they can have a look at, wander down and go, no, that's, that's miles too much, we couldn't handle that. You know, so, well, I, you know, I don't want to say to them, look, I found you a place, and they go down there and go, we're going to need about 15 people to do this, we haven't got them. They've only got a small group that want to get together for, for wellbeing and for their mindset.
Well, what I propose then is that we ask the clerk if she can furnish you with some possible sites. And you can go to them and let them come back and say, we're not mowing the whole of the field at Charlotte Harvey. But I did like the idea of growing things. We've, I think we've already asked the allotment holders if they grow any surplus, would they like to give it to the Charlotte Harvey Food Hub? But it's a good idea. So we'll ask Jane to communicate that with you, Graham, all right?
Um, one other thing. If you're going to put or thinking about putting, growing vegetables, which is, it's all going to have to be enclosed because of the deer are going to eat everything.
Oh, yeah.
There won't be nothing left.
Yeah, okay, fine, thank you. Okay. Twelve, to consider receiving emergency planning training. This is, this is from the officer at Breckland, who never bothered replying to us for six months, but now she wants to come and offer training, is that right?
Since Liz has been in touch with Debbie, her name is, there's been more going on at Breckland and she has delivered, I think, training session, probably two councillors at Breckland, key. So I think it's the same presentation she's willing to come out and give to.
How long is it for?
Half an hour.
Okay, well, on the basis, it'll be half an hour. Sorry, Stan. Yeah, I think on the basis, it's going to be half an hour. We'll leave it with you to find a spare session to do it. And there isn't a problem if we did it at half past six to finish at seven for a council meeting. All right. Okay with that? Yeah? To consider air conditioning for the town council office. Yeah, that's you, Stan?
Yeah, I, I've raised that, Chairman, in my capacity as lead councillor and HR chairman. I was in the office the other day when it was particularly warm and uncomfortable. And although there were mixed views on whether air conditioning would be appropriate or not, I felt it was a consideration that had to be considered because I feel that the staff need to have an option. Now, there are typically two types available. There's a hard install or there's a, a mobile unit you can get for less than £500. My, my view would be that if there is a need, if it's agreed that there is a need, if you remember summer last year was on Thursday, I think, then we should consider our staff's comfort and for them to be able to work in a comfortable environment. But I, I think the mobile unit that's costing less than £500 would be a reasonable compromise because it can be moved around.
Jill?
As regards a mobile unit, they can be very noisy. We actually did have aircon installed in two rooms last year and it's so quiet, you know, you don't even know that it's on.
Okay.
So once it's, what shall I say, revved up to speed, it then drops down to a comfortable level. It can also be used for heating if there's a problem with the heating at any time.
And there is. Perhaps you could give the details of that to the clerk, if you don't mind. Graham?
Yeah, I think it's a brilliant idea. You should always look after people that are working. Like Stan said, a mobile, it's going, how many times is it going to be used? If it's got hard store, it's just not going to be used. So I think you've got the right idea.
I, I would suggest what we, oh, sorry, Sue.
So I was just going to say, we've got a mobile one at home. Personally, it's lovely for the house, but I think in an office, it's probably going to be noisy.
Well, can I suggest then, if, if we accept the proposal to consider air conditioning, we ask the clerk, because you've got nothing else to do, to explore a fixed one and the mobile ones and come back with some costs and some consideration. Because the only thing I would say about the mobile one, I, I think you might need two because you might, you've got two rooms. In fact, you've got three rooms. But anyway, let's not cloud the issue. Are you happy for her, ask the clerk to have a look at it and come back with some proposals for us in time for next summer? Well, it is, you know, we're not going to sort something out because I can guarantee you, if we go and buy something and it comes next week, it'll suddenly get really cold. Anyway, okay. Happy with that, right? Okay, before, no, we'll, we'll deal that next. Fourteen is planning. Are you doing this? Okay, go on, figure that.
I didn't realise this was on the agenda till I got it this afternoon, just laid on. There is just the one there, which is demolition of a bungalow, two five five Lovell Gardens. And that will be then become rebuilt part of the care home, which is, adjoins it. I did go down with Liz to look at this with, with the flood issues. And I think Liz is on top of the flood issue or possible flood issue. We thought, we did discover some problems down the line which can be cured. But as an actual planning application, I don't think there's anything which I could see that we could object to, so.
So we're not going to, no objection then, yeah? But we're, we're, we'll take any advice from Liz that might come about flooding. Okay?
We've had Liz's report, she's sent me a copy of that, so we're usually in support of that.
Do that, yeah.
Okay. All right?
Yeah.
Before we pass a resolution to exclude the public, can I say, we had an events meeting before, Sue has left here. before, Sue has left here some details of that and what we're doing and what we might do. And there's a little questionnaire at the back. If you've got time, she'd like you to fill it out and give it back to about what we might be doing in the future. She's also left some leaflets for the food hub we've had, well, that Belvoir have had produced and printed. So you can take one of those, they're very nice ones. Right. And on that point, Jane, can we, can we agree that we, is this about one of those things? Go on.
No one mentioned anything about homework.
It's in your contract. Okay. We're happy to exclude the public and the press, yes?